I call the Board of Selectmen July 15, 2019, regular meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of minutes of June 17, 2019, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move you approve the minutes of the June 17, 2019, regular meeting as submitted.
Second? Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Leslie?
Yes, I would like to actually thank DI for these minutes. They were extensive and I think they very nicely and very comprehensively detailed the meeting that we had where we needed to nominate and vote on it to be a one-year planning board position. So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Now past the hour of seven o'clock, we have Central Mass Grown to consider an application for a one-day special license for all alcoholic beverages for an event to be held at Tugus Farm located at 234 Ball Street.
Good evening, select persons. My name is Mackenzie May. I'm the Executive Director of Central Mass Grown and resident of the town of Worcester. I'm here to request, first I'd like to pass something out to you just in case you're not familiar with my organization. These are for you to take home. Those are directories to help connect you with farmers across Worcester County. So that is what we do as an organization. We educate consumers, we educate farmers, and we help bring down some of the barriers for people to buy local. I've been an employee at Tugus Farm for the past five years. I'm very familiar with the property. And this organization is now headed into its fifth year and it's time that we do an event fundraiser. So I would like to do it at Tugus, given that I'm so familiar with that property and the owners. And I'm requesting a one-day special license for all spirits in order to be able to provide a high-end event for customers to draw them, especially out of the Middlesex region and this region of Worcester County.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you just tell us a little bit more about the details of the event and how the site is going to be organized?
Absolutely. You all have the packet of information as provided. So I tried to be as detailed as possible in my cover letter. This is going to take place on the western portion of the Tugus property. So as you drive up Ball Street, the majority of the property lies on the eastern side of Ball Street. The western side of Ball Street is much smaller. It's not where the animals are or in the kitchen and all of that. There's one building over there and about 20 acres' worth of property in total, but the space in which that map details is probably no more than five acres of that entire piece of the property. There's good sightlines between the individual stops that the consumers would visit. There would be one main space right at the backside of the west entrance, as we call it, and it's labeled if you drive up Ball Street. And that would be where we would have acoustic live music, charcuterie table, standing cocktail tables for folks to mingle at will, as well as put in bids for the silent auction items that we'll be putting together to try and bolster some good fundraising dollars for the organization. And then attendees will be able to make their way at will to the peach orchard, which is space number B, if memory recalls on your map, back to the blueberries, C, and D over to the apples. And at each station, there's going to be a small selection of cocktail tables and a few tables where restaurants will be set up, one restaurant per space. As of now, I have two friends who own restaurants in Worcester, Birch Tree Bread Company and Dead Horse Hill, both of whom have agreed to participate and they're looking forward to it. And I requested John Lawrence of Pepper's Catering to participate in it as well because I'd really like to make this bolster up the local economy, not just Central Mass Grown itself. So it's going to be about three hours. There will be acoustic live music at two of the different stops and it's going to be a pretty quiet evening up there on the hill.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The application, Chief Liver, has been reviewed and you're satisfied with all of the conditions. Okay. And your personnel who are involved in the alcohol serving are all tip-certified?
Yes, all tip-certified, hired from the restaurants who will be serving as well.
Great, thank you. Does the Board have any comments or questions? Leslie?
Question? First of all, it sounds like a very nice event.
Thank you.
Very nice. Guests shall have identification on the person and must be 21 years or older. Will they be given bracelets or anything like that so they're easily identifiable?
It's a 21-plus event. So upon ticketing, it will be online ticket purchase through an e-ticket. You'll have that failsafe of are you 21 years or older, just as similar events are requested.
Okay, but they will be expected to have ID on them to show that at the event?
If it's requested of the Board or the Police Chief, we're happy to do that because we'll be able to take that information in as people check in, so it wouldn't be onerous for us to do so. But I didn't want to put it out there if it wasn't requested.
This wouldn't be any different than any other server. If there's a question on the part of the person that's doing the serving, they can request an ID.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board vote to approve the application for a one-day special liquor license as submitted by Mackenzie May of Central Mass Grown for an event to be held on the grounds of Tugus Farm at 234 Ball Street on August 11, 2019, between 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with the following conditions. One, the license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event. Two, guests shall have identification on their person and must be 21 years of age or older. Three, proper signage and barriers shall be in place notifying guests that alcohol must be contained to the marked event area only. Four, satisfactory inspections shall be performed prior to the start of the event by the Fire, Building, and Health Departments.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Just to repeat, that's Tugus Farm at 234 Ball Street on Sunday, August 11, from 5 to 8:00 PM.
Correct. I will be sure to send invitations.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Now past the hour of 7:05 PM, we have David Kane, MIS Director, update on website improvements.
Good evening. All right. I just wanted to provide a quick update for you on the changes that are coming to the town's website. I know it's been an issue that's been of interest for the Board, and so I thought it might be good to share with you the latest and greatest on that. First, real briefly, a quick background on our current site. We started about 15 years ago with our website. 10 years ago, we started working with a company called Virtual Town Hall. They designed the site, or they worked with us to design, and they host the site that's in place right now. Virtual Town Hall is a local company based out of Boxborough. They've grown over the years. They currently have over half of the municipalities in Massachusetts as clients, including all of the, as I indicated in your memo, half of Massachusetts municipal clients and all of the recently awarded sites from the MMA Annual Website Contest. They've recently merged with another company. They're now known as Civic Plus. It's the same company. They have a broader reach now nationwide, and we're working with them again to revise the site. The update is taking place over two phases. We're currently in the beginning of Phase One, and the reason that there are two phases is that the current site is built on a system or a platform that is being retired. So we're essentially migrating the site to a new platform, which will enable lots of new features and so forth. But that's the focus of this first phase, is to get this new design in place, to migrate all the current content over to the new design. We expect that to be done by the end of the summer, early fall. And then the second phase will be to look at that, make sure everything's come over as we had intended, add function and additional features at that point that this new platform will allow for us. And that will take place during the fall part of the year. In terms of the content on the website, there are kind of three categories of content that we're focusing on. The first one is citizen information, just basic information about the town, about the boards and elected officials. We want to make sure that certain best practices are followed and that key information is not only available but readily or easily found on the site. Things like names and contact information for elected officials, boards, other committees, names and contact info of key personnel throughout the town, meeting agendas and minutes, public safety information, trash and recycling information, permitting, zoning information, so forth. And we want to make sure it's all compliant with American with Disabilities Act, which is something the new platform kind of forces us, enables us, to do without any additional Second category of content is that of what we're calling citizen interaction. This is where the ability to interact with folks through the posting of town meetings, elections, public hearings, posting of open positions on boards and various committees, personnel and position vacancies within the town, also the ability to directly email elected officials and key personnel, emergency alert notifications such as Code Red and others. We're looking at public bidding opportunities there and an improvement in the search functionality within the town's website. And then the other third category of content, if you will, is what we're looking at is online government or e-services. The ability to complete forms online, which is something that we do now, but in a limited fashion. Again, this new platform will allow for more significant increase in the types of forms as well as submitting applications online. The ability to pay tax bills and other online payments will be enhanced, submit all public records requests. The type of news and content that you can subscribe to, like currently you can subscribe to Town News and get an alert if there's something new happening, or you can subscribe to the boards' meetings and get agendas and minutes as they're made available. There'll be a wider variety of content that will be subscribable. Some of the bigger requests that we get, and one of the most accessed features on the website, is for recreation programming and registration. That's kind of right now, it's buried in the recreation department. We're going to be bringing that to the front, the homepage, making it more accessible. The ability to apply for permits online, building permits and such. I'll put a plug in here for the GIS viewer. Some great maps and some other content is there. That whole section has been redesigned and will be even more accessible. Other things like property record cards or the ability to search the town's code and bylaws will also be brought forward and enhanced. So those are some of the categories of content that we're looking at, focusing on at first. The new site will have what we call responsive design, where it will know if you're on a phone or a computer or tablet, and adjust the format based on what you're using. Over half of all visitors now are coming in on a mobile device. That was not the case 10 years ago. And so we're in the process right now, going through all of this. We're working with all the departments throughout the town. They've all been asked to look at the content on each department's page, make sure it's accurate, current. We have an internal working group comprised of members of Fire and Police and a number of members here at Town Hall and Admin and Town Clerk. And we're all looking at a variety of different sites, some of these award-winning sites, to determine what about the design makes it desirable, what features are out there, how can we benefit from some of what they've already been through. And that's kind of what Civic Plus brings to the table, is their experience there. So anyway, that's a brief overview of where we're at with it. I hope to come back before you, later in the summer, more likely in the fall, when we have something more together to share with you. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I have a couple of questions. So these two companies merged. We are using one company's platform. I take it we're moving to the other company's platform? Is that the case, or this is?
No. The platform we're currently using is used by a variety of companies and it's being retired, much like a version of Windows would be retired. The new platform is based on Drupal, which is a modern, current-day web system that many companies use. And so we're moving to this Drupal system.
Okay. And I'm curious, we're looking at doing this now, the older system's going to be retired. How many other municipalities are in the same circumstance where they're having to do the migration?
Yeah.
Just in terms of setting the right expectations for timeframe to get this done, what kind of demand are they going to have on their support people to assist all these?
That's a good question. We are actually amongst the tail end of their clients that are doing this migration. I don't know exact numbers. My understanding is that all but about 15 Massachusetts municipalities have already migrated. So they're looking to get the last remaining sites off of first class, which is what we're currently using and on to this new system.
So we're not their learning curve for getting the migration done?
No, no.
They should be well-versed in that by now.
I'm not a big proponent of being on the forefront or on the cutting edge of things. I value stability and a known process.
Excellent.
So that's the approach.
Just one other point I wanted to ask about this. We've previously communicated that changes to the website would probably be tied into our Community Compact IT Grant, a study that we would do with that and the implementation. So anything we're doing now is going to be sustained through any other IT-related improvements we make in the future. We're just motivated to do this sooner because of the circumstance of the current platform being retired. Is that right?
I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Leslie?
Thank you very much. I liked everything that you said. It sounds exciting. You touched on all the things that I know that I'm concerned about and residents are. Do you, should residents expect something that looks very different, or is the goal to make it look similar but with some enhancements?
No, it will look very different.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a whole new design that our internal group is reviewing right now. We've been through a couple of early prototypes, if you will, nothing I'm even comfortable sharing really yet. But it will have a whole different look and feel, colors, photos, everything else about it will be different. Most notably though, I think, will be the layout of the homepage. Everything will be different there. I think, hoping, I believe everything will be a lot simpler. The flow of menus and the main features that are presented on the homepage, I think, will be significantly enhanced and a lot easier to use, but will look nothing like what the current site looks like.
Okay, and that's very exciting because hopefully that'll draw a lot of people to want to look at it and see what it's like and be interested in kind of moving around, navigating around in there.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Julian?
Thank you for all of this and thanks for the memo. And in that memorandum that you gave to us, you said the website will be shaped by public input and the application of best practices for municipal websites towards the end of the memo. So how's that going to work? Are you going to?
Well, there'll be a variety of ways that people can provide feedback. There'll be opportunities to comment on the site. We have a general webmaster email where people can send comments, but they'll be, we'll be reaching out and looking for different ways to get people's input. We don't yet know exactly what that's going to look like, but that's a core tenet of the approach.
Great, thank you.
Don?
As we migrate, will there be any downtime on the website or will it be up the whole time?
No, I don't, my understanding is there, I don't want to say there won't be no, there won't be any downtime. They will have the new site up and running long before we take the site down, the current site down. So it'll be a matter of do we, are we comfortable with where we're at, ready to make it public and available, and then we'll kind of just swap the two. So, you know, a few moments maybe. It'll be done overnight.
Flip the URL switch and it goes to a new one instead of the old one, so, yeah. Any other questions? Would you have any, maybe a couple links to other municipalities that have made the switch, just so we'd be able to get a look at some representative examples?
If I may, through the Chair. So, you know, we don't chase awards for the sake of chasing awards, but typically awards are based on best practices. And so we like to try to model ourselves and the things that we do have the best practices. That's what we do for the budget, for our forecasting. You know, we took first place statewide for annual report this past year. So the Mass Municipal Association has a whole website competition. And the thing, it's not necessarily in the winning of it, but it's in the continuous improvement, to look at the features and to try to, you know, not reinvent the wheel. If someone else is doing something that's working well and is getting great response, then we want to emulate that. And as David pointed out, almost every site that has one is using the same platform, so we have the same potential to do those things. My suggestion would be to go through the Mass Municipal Association, go to their website contest.
And find their contest.
And you can see what has been deemed to be the best websites.
Yeah.
And again, it's tough sometimes, you know, folks in the private sector may look at our municipal website and look at what they do. Well, there's a big difference between a company that's, you know, profit-driven, that has an entire department dedicated to marketing and the website. The beauty of this software, which drew us to it initially, and why so many municipalities use it, is it's a decentralized approach to your website. So there's an overall coherent design and layout, and that's what David's speaking to, the infrastructure, the framework to that. But then the individual departments are able to populate the data and the information and to keep it fresh. So obviously, within that realm or that aspect of it, there's a lot of potential there. You know, it's only as good as the information that you put on there and only as good as the freshness of that information. So it's a challenge for a community our size. We don't have anybody dedicated to the website. So the overall architecture gets done, but then we work with the departments to freshen it up. One of the benefits of doing a complete overhaul like we're doing is it forces everybody to look at everything again. It's almost like zero-based budgeting. You go back, you call the old stuff out, and it's a chance to freshen up, make sure that what you're providing is, you know, timely. But I would suggest that that's a great place to start. You can just look at any municipal website, but you can look at, if you look at that, if you look at that Mass Municipal Association site, you can see past winners and kind of see who's moved in and out and why, and what have they done differently. So, and again, internally, you know, we're looking at the towns that are doing something well now. We don't want to, you know, go out and recreate the wheel. We want to copy, you've heard me say many times, you know, brilliant people create, but geniuses steal. We're going to steal. And so if you see something on there that you like, you know, let us know and we'll take a look at it. Some of the things, some of the things do require, you know, in some of the larger communities, there will be somebody dedicated to that site, you know? So some of the interactive stuff has a dedicated person. We don't have that. So some things won't scale down to us necessarily, but overall, I think there's a lot that is applicable, and I think there's value in just freshening this up. It's been a while since we really did a complete overhaul. We're due for that. And so we have new functionality and a new architecture and then, you know, new content. Content comes secondarily from the departmental level, you know, but the overall architecture, the look and feel of it needs to be there. But I think it's exciting. It's going to be a great project.
Great, thank you, John.
Anything else? All set.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing a future update.
And that brings us to reports. Julian?
Yes, so I would like to thank all of the residents who have been volunteering for board and committee positions, and I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the fact that there's a vacancy on the White Cliffs Committee, and that, which was posted on July 1st. All applications are due on July 19th, which is this Friday. So if you're at all interested or know someone who might be interested, please fill out an application. And if you have any questions, you can always email me, and my email address is accessible on the Board of Selectmen website page. And we received, again, wonderful reports from the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, and I was very interested in Chief Livers' update on Code Red and texting 911, and I was wondering if you would speak to the public about that?
Sure. To the Chair.
Yes, absolutely, Chief.
Well, Code Red is our primary emergency notification system, as you know. Years ago, we had reverse 911. That was maintained by the Sheriff's Department. That went away when they had a leak in the ceiling and all the hardware and electronics got destroyed and they never replaced it. So that left us with no reverse 911 notification. Then through the Town Administrator, he negotiated a system with, Westboro, Southborough.
Yeah.
To share the costs of going to the Code Red system. And basically, anybody can go on the town's website, Police Department website, Fire website, there's a link, it just says Code Red. You register, you need to put in your address, and you can link multiple forms of notification, your email, you can get an email notification. You can select how you want your notifications. You can get a text message to your phone, you get an email to your phone, or you can get a phone call to either your residential phone or your cell phone. And you can, ironically, you can get all four methods of communication or notification if you so choose. Currently, as a policy decision by the Board, as recommended by the Police Department, Emergency Management Prepartness Director, the Fire Chief, a very conscious decision was made to use it solely for emergency notifications. So if you subscribe to the Code Red notification system and it goes off, there's something that you really want to know about. Because we can select neighborhoods, we can select individual streets, we can select individual homes, an entire section of town, all of town, for a notification. So when you get that Code Red alert from the town in Northborough, it's something that you really want to pay attention to. Other communities use notifications for like water hydrant flushings, bake sales, and that basically kind of turns into a Boy Who Cried Wolf-type thing. I mean, I actually was getting notifications when I registered here in Northborough through Shrewsbury and other towns about that sort of stuff. It really kind of desensitized you to the nature of the system and what it's intended for. So we've had a fairly good, it's been slow, it's been, I think, 2016, I think, is when we rolled it out. We currently have 2,000, let me find it here, 690 residential addresses that are listed in the system. Now, that can be a little misleading. That doesn't mean we have 2,690 homes listed. There are devices, it could be cell phones, it could be email addresses, it could be home phones or cell phones, that all are linked to an address. So I can't tell you exactly how many devices there are, but there are that many addresses associated with it. So if you looked at it solely from an address numbering, I also checked with the Assessors' Office when I did this, we have a little over 5,000 residential addresses. So in that sense, we're about 50 percent. But like I said, I can't tell you what the exact breakdown is. We have 116 commercial or business phones registered as well. Clearly, the number could be higher. And one of the things that I have had discussions with both Fire Chief and the Town Administrators, moving forward, we'll schedule, we'll let this thing out and decide what best, how best to do it would be to have scheduled periodic test announcements that go out, because, you know, we've had it for three or four years now. We've used it approximately three, maybe five times for real emergencies. So I don't want people to think that they've downloaded and it doesn't exist anymore. So, kind of like back in the old days, every Tuesday of the, first Tuesday of the month, the air raids irons, we turn on the fire whistle. But at least, you know, maybe once quarterly, you know, we would just do an announcement that this is a test of the Northborough Code Red Emergency Alert System.
Remind people.
Had there been a real emergency, you would have been there, so. So again, that's something I highly recommend, and I'm sure the Fire Chief will echo that sentiment. It's basically the only way we have to locally give information. You know, during a winter disaster or things like that, people can watch the news, and that's more a regional or a New England-type pers-. And that's more a regional or a New England-type perspective of what's going on. But as far as locally, what's impacting us, that's our notification system.
Great.
Text to 911. That kind of rolled out probably around the first of the year. It wasn't rolled out with a lot of fanfare because it was done, kind of a staggered, little slow approach on the part of the state 911 department, only because they weren't sure what the impact was going to be. Basically, the, the slogan for state 911 is "Call if you can, text if you can't." Clearly, we would want to have somebody call us and dial 911 so we can actually speak to a person. We can elicit more information, get more details for responding, first responders as to what's actually going on. Text to 911 would be for, I mean, some instances would be, let's say, a domestic violence situation where an abuser is very keen to whether or not a victim is going to be calling the police, and you can't get on the phone and have a conversation, but you could discreetly text. You know, the only other thing that comes to mind is you think there's an intruder in your house and you're hiding and you don't want to speak loudly. So.
It's also great for special needs, people that can't speak.
Exactly. We also do have, I was actually going to hit there, we have a designated keyboard at the station with the text to 911 system for the hearing impaired. And unlike, it's, I don't want people to think that when they text to 911, one of my dispatches is sitting there with a cellphone. It actually comes in on the next gen, the 911 equipment and computer, and it comes up on the computer screen, and they text back and forth using the keyboard. So, the communication from the dispatcher is quicker than, you know, how I text, anyway. But, you know, my, my daughter can do it, 500 words a minute, so. Using abbreviations. So, that's, that's where we are, text to 911. You know, I was originally concerned about the impact that was going to have. I just had visions of every young person that wanted to call 911, said, well, let's just text instead. Hasn't been the case. We do get periodic tests from the state 911 department. They will call 911, they'll intentionally trigger a text 911, and that's to test the dispatchers. They do the same thing with the hearing impaired equipment as well, because the dispatchers all have to know how to send pre-recorded messages to save time with the hearing impaired. We have had several text to 911 calls, nothing of the urgency that I had mentioned before. It's just, it was the convenience of texting. But that's, that's about that, so. Any questions? Glad to answer them.
So, you just want to emphasize, "Call if you can, text if you can."
Absolutely.
For the most part.
Absolutely. Definitely call.
Yep.
Like I said, only if you cannot, for some reason, like I said, and as the chief said, it's, it's very, very good for those with disabilities that may not be able to speak clearly or hear. And so, okay.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Anything more, Julianne?
No, thank you.
Okay. Leslie?
Okay. I also want to thank both the police chief and the fire chief for their reports. As far as the police, the first thing I wanted to mention was the wonderful Rotary event that John, Jason, Don, Tim, and I attended very recently to honor Officer Phil Martin, very well-deserving individual who's worked very hard for the town of Northborough, takes a lot of pride in his work, can tell by the way he speaks about what he does, whether it's up at the podium or when he's just mingling with you. He's, he's a, he's a great guy.
Cheers.
And I remember him very fondly from DARE, and my oldest is 29 years old, and he still has his DARE t-shirt. It's a little flimsy, but it's still in existence.
Yeah.
He would be thrilled with that, actually. So, but Officer Phil Martin, again, what a wonderful person, and we're very, very pleased.
Absolutely.
It was a nice event. So, please pass on our congratulations again to him. And I also wanted to thank Officer Mike Bissett for being the school resource officer for three years.
Yes.
At the high school. And I know him personally, too. He ran track at the high school, so I still see him running around the track with his ponytail. So, he, he looks a little different now.
Well, he does not have a ponytail, yes, sir.
No. But he's a, another wonderful guy.
He did.
Yes. He's another wonderful guy, does a great job. And by the way you describe it here, it sounds like he, he did a wonderful job and was very well-regarded.
Did a great job.
Yeah. He just wanted to change, so. That's terrific. So, congratulations to him as well.
Back to patrol.
And as far as the fire department goes, I attended the recent meeting of the local emergency planning committee meeting. Both Chief Parenti and Mike Burrowitz organized that. It's always a great meeting. In fact, this was extremely well-attended, I thought.
Yeah.
Are the positions of most of those businesses risk managers? Is that what they're?
Yeah. Most of them are risk managers, but some of the smaller companies who don't have a risk manager just send, you know, a manager or even the owner sometimes.
Okay, okay. But it's always really a lot of the same people, obviously very interested in coming to the meeting and a lot of good dialogue, very informative. Mike does a great job with his PowerPoint presentation, and he presents some information, I think, that's, that's fantastic.
I think I'll let him know.
Yeah. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And the Fox rescue was a very popular thing, all over Facebook, everybody saw that, but it was really a nice thing to highlight.
I, I have to tell you, you know, I, I push information out on Facebook and Twitter all the time. I've never had so many shares and so many things. When, when a fox gets stuck in a, in a grate, and police were there, DPW was there, they assisted, and the fox got away, no one got bit, so we're okay.
That was great. Good, happy news. I wanted to also mention the town common is coming along. Again, I want to thank DPW Director Sharpentier and his staff. It's, it's great to drive by there and you just see how big that plot really is. It's still, it's kind of funny to look at with all the trees down. You really see the, the size of that parcel and what that may look like. So, I know they've started some work on that. That looks fantastic. And I see Fred Litchfield, our town engineer, is here. Just wanted to ask if there was any update about the downtown lights and the synchronization? I know you spoke with me briefly, but.
I had submitted a memo to the director before I went away on vacation. I understand that was forwarded to you.
Yes.
I got back today and there's been no update. Traffic is calmer now, as always after the Fourth of July. We're looking forward to work with the technicians at Massachusetts till the end of the summer to see if there's some adjustments that we can make. It is important to the technician, working as designed. That's not to say that some improvements can be made.
And I thank you for your memo about that. It sounded like, too, there's an issue potentially when someone uses the walk button, that that can actually throw off some of the synchronization?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what was referred to me. The, the main problem is that the road is just not wide enough to handle the amount of traffic that's coming through there. And given the constraints that we had when we did the first design, the whole, the several options that we explored when doing it, we knew that this was the best we could do. The pedestrian signals, that's one of the areas that they may be able to tweak a little bit. Right now, they're given a maximum amount of priority, and so, it intercepts the signal from one light corresponding to the coordination with the other. And then, if the worst-case scenario is one gets activated, then 30 seconds later, that person walks down the street and activates that one, then that one's off.
Yeah.
It kind of takes several cycles for it to get back in full synchronization. So, there may be a way to reduce the priority and make the pedestrian wait a little bit longer and maintain the coordination a little bit longer. But it's, it's not my area, but I'm told it is something that we can modify slightly.
Okay. Great. I appreciate the information on that. Is there anything further? Ben, John, I think you had shared some information about the R and T site and the fact that the fence is down, but it sounds like it's, I think the building inspector went out and took a look at it. There's really nothing dangerous on that site?
Yeah. The question was, the fencing had been removed. The fencing was up there because of the cellar hole and the potential for someone to fall into it and get injured. So, my understanding is he's been out there, spoke with the owner, the holes have been filled in, so they're not a safety issue at this point. That's why the fencing was removed.
Okay. Okay. So, we're all clear on that, then. I also want to thank the Community, Community Action Committee, CAC, who began their series of concerts at the Route 135 Fields. I believe there are five total this summer, and the first one was last night called Hit the Bus. So, I wanted to thank them for all their work on that. That takes a lot of coordination, food trucks and face painting and all the things that they have going on there. And my last question is to John. I've been asked by a resident if there are any meetings planned for public input for fire station design?
None planned just yet. We haven't gotten to that point yet. We're working to negotiate the purchase and sale. And we have an RFQ for the owner's project manager services that, that we need to get out on the street. So, we're not, we're not there yet. Obviously, we know there's interest and there will be appropriate public hearings when ready.
Okay. So, they'll be advertised in time for people to be able to show up?
Of course.
Okay. Wonderful. Then, that's my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
I just want to thank the police and fire department for their reports. As Leslie stated, we all attended the, the event for Officer Martin. It was a really nice event, obviously well-deserved, and just congratulations out to him again. And I thought the Fox story, again, was great. I think it's, I think it's great to see the, the staff in town, police, fire, DPW, everybody getting some, some positive recognition for something that's a little bit less serious, a little bit lighthearted. So, it was nice to see. Plus, I got to share it with my four-year-old and say, "Don't ever do this." And it's nice to know.
We'll stick in the grate.
Yeah. When he completely ignores me and does do it, that you guys would be able to do something. So, it's apparent.
With a sledgehammer. Explain that to him.
Yes, yes, yes. It's, but it's just nice to know as a parent, when it does happen.
Yes, yeah.
You guys will be able to, to handle it. I also wanted to say, thanks to the DPW. I've got some thank-yous from the residents on Davis Street about the truck exclusion signs that have gone up. They are very much appreciated. So, just thanks for getting those up. And last, I just got a note that I wanted to share from the senior center about an event they're, they're having there on Wednesday, July 24th. It's called "The Art of Downsizing Perfected." Says, "Join us for this lively, informative, and often humorous presentation. Kim McCarthy, CEO of Generations On The Move, Inc., a senior move specialist, and Chris Stratford, Realtor, Caldwell Baker. Take the stress out of downsizing. What do I do with all this stuff? Selling your home? Do I need to update this? And buying the just-right place to call home? Information and solutions are offered as they take that overwhelming feeling and send it packing." So, again, that's at the senior center, July 24th at 11:00 a.m. The cost is free. That is it. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Don?
And I only have one thing to report on. I'd like to note the passing of Rocco Longo, who served as town administrator in the town of Northborough, and extend the sympathy of the town of Northborough and this board to his family, Colleen, and the two sons. Rocco was, he had tons of energy, always very active in the community. And when he left to go to Ducksbury, he was missed, and he will be missed, I'm sure, by the community of Ducksbury. And I understand he had retired shortly.
Yes.
Not too long ago, and it's just an untimely death, and our sympathy is with the family.
John, would you care to add?
I was just going to say, Rocco is a great guy. I actually worked closely with him. Rocco was the coordinator for the Suffolk University Municipal Finance class that I was teaching with him and several other managers. So, it's, it was shocking, to say, to say the least, that I, I'd literally spoken with him two weeks prior and was supposed to meet with him when I got back. So, very unfortunate. There's going to be a, I have the date, which I'm happy to forward to the board. I know some of the board members may not know Rocco, but there'll be an event in Marshfield where he lived and where he worked as a town manager for a long time. It's going to be an event at the, in the auditorium at 9:00 a.m. I wish I had the date. It's on a Saturday, though.
27th.
Thank you, Kim. The 27th, so. But I'll be sure to send that along if you're interested in going. Don?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Brings it to me. I was also, as mentioned, at the Rotary's Pride and Workmanship Award, honoring Officer Phil Martin. And as has been said, Phil is just a tremendous guy, and the award is certainly well-deserved. I also want to acknowledge Don. Don spoke in behalf of the Board of Selectmen at that award dinner, had just a very heartfelt and personal statement to make about Phil, having known him for quite a long period of time. And it was just very enjoyable, and we certainly congratulate him. His dedication, his passion for the job is really outstanding, so. Second, last Tuesday, July 9th, I was at the first of two days of the contempt hearing for Santo Anza and S.A. Farms. Don and Julianne were also able to attend that day, and I think, Don, you attended the second day as well, right? John was, and Kim Foster, Assistant Town Administrator, were also present, John for the first day, Kim for both days. So, the, this is a contempt proceeding based on the prior preliminary injunction that was issued last year in October, and then subsequent violations having been alleged in violation of that preliminary injunction. So, this was a contempt hearing to address those issues. Evidence was presented to the judge, who is the same judge who heard and issued the preliminary injunction last fall. They have a couple of weeks now, I think, to, for both parties to submit any follow-up information they want to provide in support of their positions, and then the judge will take that under consideration. And it's not entirely clear what the timeframe would be for a decision to come back. So, that's where we stand with that issue at the moment. This is a late-breaking information for me, but I saw it on Facebook, so it must be true. Tomorrow, at Tavern in the Square, that's tomorrow, July 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., is a Tip a Cop event, which isn't dropping a dime on somebody, and it's not anything related to cow tipping, which you may have heard of as a mythical kind of event. This is your Northborough Police Department officers acting as celebrity servers at Tavern in the Square, making your stay enjoyable and hoping to earn some tips, or I should say donations, for Massachusetts Special Olympics. So, this is kind of a fun event to see them in a different facet of their lives. And so, I certainly encourage everybody, if they're able to, to stop in there tomorrow and make the most of their hospitality skills and tip generously in support of Massachusetts Special Olympics.
No, I was being tip-trained. We will not be serving any alcohol. We're screening out the classes. Fall around with the waitstaff and you help them out.
Excellent. Well, we certainly appreciate it. It sounds like a, a fun thing to.
Thank you for that clarification, Jim. Did you see my veins starting to stick out?
There will be, there will be professionals involved, right. And finally, I just want to thank, she's off camera, but Terry Kreen, who I believe was on vacation last week, nevertheless, made it, made herself available to come in on Monday night, July 8th, when we had a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's not something that's part of the regular schedule, and certainly Terry made the extra effort to be here that night in order to record the proceedings so that we would have those available on video. So, Terry, I can't see you from here, but there you are.
You are.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your dedication. And that concludes my report. John?
Just one thing I'd like to add to the chairman's comments about the contempt of court hearing that took place on the 9th and the 10th. One of the things, so, just so everybody understands, the town has done everything it can. We, we filed complaints for nuisance and odor in court. We received a preliminary injunction from the court. One of the issues was that the owner, Mr. Anza, was still able to bring in material for feeding of the animals. The amount and nature of that material is really largely what's in dispute. That was the source of, or the focus of several unilateral administrative orders from DEP, upon which the town based its contempt case. DEP, upon which the town based its contempt case. However, one other piece of information that I just want to put out there is that the Attorney General's Office has been working on this on behalf of the state agencies, particularly on behalf of Department of Environmental Protection. And one of the things that was indicated in court was that the AG's office and the owner, operator, Mr. Anza, have been in settlement discussions. And so although those have been ongoing for a while, my understanding, as relayed from the AG's office, is that they're making significant progress, and I hope, I hope that we will have information sooner rather than later on that. But they appear to be making, by their accounts, some progress with regard to that, to the settlement. I don't think it's eminent, as was necessarily represented by Mr. Anza's attorney, but there is real progress being made there, and we're hopeful to get something concluded in a reasonable fashion. So in the meantime, the town of Northborough will continue to do what we've done all along, and that is to pursue every single legal avenue we can to address the issue out at 429 Whitney Street to try to protect as best we can the rights of the residents that are out there.
Great. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
That concludes reports. Public comment? Anyone care to offer some public comment? Yes, Chief?
Just to further the Tip a Cop.
Yes.
That's the members of the Police Association that are doing that. It's a program that's widely used by police departments through the Special Olympics. It's the Mass Chiefs Association and many other organizations are very active in. We have an officer, Pat Harper, who is, he's taken on the Special Olympics as a little side project. He's very dedicated to it. We had no involvement with it up until his becoming officer here, and he's actually gotten a good majority of the offices, including myself, to participate in some of their events, such as, I won't get involved with the polar plunge, I'm not jumping into the ocean or any lake this winter, or in January or March. I want to see my retirement. They, we've done the torch run and the escorts of vehicles to the Special Olympic runners that come through town and other places like that. So Pat did approach me and ask if we could do that, and there's a whole handbook of what has to take place. I made it very clear to them that it was, it's an off-duty situation in there.
Yes.
They were all donated at times. I'll probably be there myself for a little while.
Great.
Really? Maybe I'll come over just to.
Just to harass the police staff a little bit?
Yeah. No problem, I'll eat it for you.
I appreciate you, Chief.
Yeah, we can have a good time.
Chief, if you want to borrow my kids to make it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyone else for public comment?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you very much. New business, we have interview subcommittee recommendation for appointments to the Youth Commission and Historic District Commission. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Casey Rickley to the Youth Commission for a partial three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2022, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you.
I move the board vote to appoint Millie Milton as an alternate member on the Historic District Commission for a partial three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2022, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.